Which are written on a blackboard. There are certain consecutive natural numbers starting from 1 which are written on a blackboard. See here, a teacher asked a student to find out the average. A teacher asked a student to find out an average. A student erased one number. A student erased one number. A student erased one number and found the average to be thirty-five seven by seventy. A student erased one number and found out the average of the remaining numbers to be thirty-five seven by seventy. Thirty-five seven by seventy, which number he erased and how many numbers were written on the board? Which number he erased and how many numbers were written on the blackboard? Again I am repeating the question, there are certain consecutive natural numbers starting from 1 which are written on a blackboard. A teacher asked a student to find out the average. A student erased one number and find out the, found out the average of the remaining numbers to be thirty-five seven by seventy. How many numbers were written on the board and which number a student erased? See here. Solution. Suppose, 1, 2, 3 and so on up to n, can I say the series is in arithmetic progression? If a student has not erased a number, average will be first term plus last term by 2. It is approximately thirty-five seven by seventy. N is approximately closer to seventy-one. Seventy-one or seventy, it makes no difference, why? Because it is approximate, it is not the exact value. We are saying that the value of n oscillate around seventy-one. Think logically, thirty-five seven by seventeen is nothing but thirty-five point four. Seven by seventeen is point four right? This is thirty-five point four. If I take any value seventy, seventy or seventy-one, it makes no difference. What is 1 plus seventy by 2? Seventy-one by 2. What is seventy-one by 2? Thirty-five point five. What is this value? Thirty-five point four, that means n is around seventy, that is confirmed. N is around seventy. Now, after erasing one number, after erasing one number, average was founded to be thirty-five seven by seventy. Thirty-five seven by seventeen is nothing but thirty-five seven by seventeen, six zero two by seventy if I convert into fraction. Here we are saying that n is closer to seventy but here n is closer to seventeen. What is the multiple of seventeen closer to seventy? Seventeen fours are sixty-eight. Two-four-zero-eight by sixty-eight. There are sixty-eight numbers are there on the board after erasing one number. That means total how many numbers will be there? Sixteen-nine numbers will be there. Average is nothing but S N by N. N is sixteen-nine. S N is N into N plus 1 by 2, thirty-five. This is nothing but two-four-one-five by sixteen-nine. There are actually sixteen-nine numbers on the board whose sum is two-four-one-five. I erased one number, therefore it is sixty-eight. Therefore the sum became two-four-zero-eight. Which number we erased? Seven. Which number we erased? Seven. There are only three steps involved. Is it clear why n is closer to seventy? 1 plus N by 2, thirty-five seven by seventeen is thirty-five point four, so n is closer to seventy. After erasing one number, average is S N by N, thirty-five seven by seventeen, six zero two by seventy. N is seventeen but according to this statement it is seventeen. Seventeen fours are sixty-eight. You may get it out, what if the denominator has got two values closer to n approximated value? That will be my fourth question. Two-four-zero-eight by sixty-eight, there are sixty-eight numbers on the board after erasing one number. So total numbers will be from 1 to sixteen-nine, average is S N by N. Sum of the first ten natural numbers is N into N plus 1 by 2, sixteen-nine into seventy by 2. Two-four-one-five is the sum for sixteen-nine numbers. I erased one number, therefore the numbers will become sixty-eight. Number, sum will decrease by seven because two-four-one-five became two-four-zero-eight. Idea clear? It's an original previous year cat question. Clear right Karja Sanju? Okay right? Next, replace, second question. Second one. Replace thirty-five seven by seventeen. Replace thirty-five seven by seventeen with twenty-seven four by thirty. Practice question. Twenty-seven four by thirteen. Replace thirty-five seven by seventeen. Replace thirty-five seven by seventeen with twenty-seven four by thirty. Let us solve the same question. There are total 1, 2, 3, 10 n numbers are there. Average is first term plus last term by 2, closer to twenty-seven four by thirty, n is closer to fifty-three. You write fifty-three or fifty-four, it makes because we are just finding out n is oscillating around which value. After erasing one number, after erasing one number, average is given by S N by N, which is nothing but twenty-seven four by thirty, D is a thirteen, three fifty-five by thirteen. Three fifty-five by thirteen. N should be closer to fifty-three, multiple of thirteen is fifty-two. Into four. So this will be fourteen-twenty divided by twenty-twenty-two. Twenty-one-forty, one-forty-two divided by fifteen. There are fifty-two numbers after erasing one number, so total it will become 1, 2, 3 till fifty-three. So average will become S N by N, total fifty-three, N into N plus 1 by 2, twenty-seven, one-four-three-one by fifty-three. Fifty-three became fifty-two, one number erased, sum decreased, number erased is left. Number erased is left. Next, another question. There are certain consecutive natural numbers, there are certain consecutive natural numbers starting from 1 which are written on a blackboard. There are certain consecutive natural numbers starting from 1 which are written on a blackboard. A student while adding, a student while adding, added one number twice. A student while adding, a student while adding, added one number twice. Added one number twice. And therefore got the sum as thousand. A student while adding, added one number twice and got the sum as thousand. How many numbers were written on the board? Which number he added twice? How many numbers were written on the board? And which number he added twice? How many numbers were written on the board and which number he added twice? See here. Which number he added was? See here. There are certain consecutive natural numbers starting from 1 which are written on a board. If I add every number once, can I say it will be N into N plus 1 by 2? But in this number, there is one number which is added twice, that I will call it as X. Can I say one X could be any number from 1 to n? This is nothing but equal and two thousand. I hope this step is clear. If I add every number once, it will be N into N plus 1 by 2. There is one number which is added twice, so plus X. Now, can I say that N into N plus, this I will prove it. N into N plus 1 is a nearer two thousand. N plus 1 is closer to N, so N square will be closer to two thousand. What is the perfect square that is just less than two thousand? Forty-four square is one-nine-three-six. So N is forty-four. You will get it out, why approximate became equal and two. I will prove that, less than forty-four, no value will be possible. Greater than forty-four, no value will be possible. Suppose if I take forty-five. If I take forty-five, forty-five into forty-six by 2, D is a twenty-three. Twenty-three, fives are one-fifteen, ninety-two plus 1, eleven, one-zero-three-five. 2, 1, 0, 3, 5, you are adding something and you want to make the number thousand, is it possible? No, that means for greater than forty-four, it is not possible. Think logically. Suppose if I take forty, forty into forty one by 2. When I, when I am taking any value forty, that means X will be any number from 1 to forty. This is a twenty, this is eight-twenty. To eight-twenty only if you add the maximum value forty. What is eight-twenty plus forty? Eight-sixty. Right? But how much I require some? Thousand. If forty is not able, can thirty be possible? Thirty will become thirty into thirty-one by 2, four-sixty-five. Two-four-sixty-five, if you add maximum value thirty, still you will not get thousand. That means n value less than or equal and two forty not possible. Let me see whether forty-three is a possible. Forty-three into forty-four by 2, twenty-two, six. Nine-forty-six. If I take forty-three numbers, sum will become nine-forty-six. To nine-forty-six, if you add forty-three, which is maximum value one to forty-three. What is nine-forty-six plus forty-three? Nine-eighty-nine. But what is the sum? Thousand. Less than forty-four, no value will satisfy. Karja, greater than forty-four, no value will satisfy. So what is the answer? N has to be forty-four. So total numbers which are written on a board is forty-four plus X is a thousand. Twenty-two, nine-ninety plus X is a thousand. Number written twice is ten. Number written on a board is forty-four, number written twice is a ten. Take a perfect square just less than this value. These are all the ways to prove that N greater than forty-four not possible, less than forty-four not possible. Just do some values, you will understand that why less than forty-four, greater than forty-four is not possible. It is also a previous year cat question. Next, consecutive natural numbers. There are certain consecutive natural numbers starting from 1, starting from 1 which are written on a blackboard. Which are written on a blackboard. A student while adding, a student while adding, forgot to add one number. A student while adding, forgot to add one number. Forgot to add one number. And therefore got the sum as five-seventy-five. Forgot to add one number. And therefore got the sum as five-seventy-five. There one number is added twice, here he forgot to add one number and got the sum as five-seventy-five. Find the number he forgot to add. Find the number he forgot to add. And how many numbers are written on the board? Previous question wants to understand, it's a very easy question. Find the numbers written on a board and which number he forgot to add. Equation will become N into N plus 1 by 2 minus X equal and two five-seventy-five. One less than or equal and two, X less than or equal and two n. N into N plus 1 by 2 is closer to five-seventy-five. N square is closer to one-one-five-zero. N square is closer to one-one-five-zero. If it is plus X, I would have taken a perfect square less than the right hand side value. What is the perfect square just greater than one-one-five-zero? Thirty-four. Thirty-four square is one-one-five-six. It is thirty-four. You can prove it easily, less than thirty-four, greater than thirty-four, less than thirty-four and greater than thirty-four cases will not be valid. Cases not valid, just to plug in some values, you will understand. So, N has to be thirty-four, so this will become thirty-four into thirty-five by 2 minus X equal and two five-seventy-five. Five-ninety-five minus five-seventy-five is X. Number forgot to add is which number? Twenty. I hope here you can solve it by taking less than thirty-four, greater than thirty-four. Number forgot to add is twenty, right? Now I will give two questions for you, I will wait six minutes for you to solve, please write now. From a book, from a book, one single page is missing. From a book, one single page is missing. Page numbers are written on both the sides of the page starting from 1. Page numbers are written on the both the sides of the page, starting from 1. Starting from 1. Because of the missing page, because of the missing page, average of the remaining page numbers, average of the remaining page numbers was founded to be, next class Kanna? Second class. Average of the remaining page numbers was founded to be twenty-five-two by three. Which page numbers are missing? Which page numbers are missing? How to be? Twenty-five-two by three. Which page numbers are missing? I will repeat the question, from a book, certain consecutive pages are missing. Page numbers are written on both the sides of the page starting from 1. Because of the missing page, average of the page numbers was founded to be twenty-five-two by three. Which page numbers are missing? Next. From a book, certain consecutive pages are missing. From a book, certain consecutive pages are missing. If the sum of all the page numbers, if the sum of all the page numbers, if the sum of all the page numbers is founded to be nine-eight-zero-eight. If the sum of all the page numbers, missing, missing page numbers, missing page numbers are founded to be nine-eight-zero-eight. Nine-eight-zero-eight. How many page numbers are missing? Which all page numbers are missing? How many page numbers are missing? Which all page numbers are missing? How many page numbers are missing? Which all page numbers? See, I will just explain, this is a book, certain consecutive pages are missing. Not necessarily starting from 1, it could be made in beginning R N. Every page will have two page numbers. The sum of all the page numbers missing was founded to be how much? Nine-eight-zero-eight. How many page numbers are missing? Which all page numbers are missing? Six minutes time, write the sum. Write the sum. Let us assume the page missing are A plus here. We don't know whether it is from 1 to n or 2 to N plus 1. A is the lower limit, it could be the first page, second page and so on. What is sum of all this? S N is nothing but nine-eight-zero-eight. S N is N by 2 into first term plus last term equal and two nine-eight-zero-eight. N into 2A plus N plus 1 equal and two, 2 into nine-eight-zero-eight. D is nothing but N into 2A plus N plus 1 means 2 into 2 power 4 into 630. If I factorize it. N into 2A plus N plus 1 means 2 power 5 into 630. Case one. If N is odd. N is odd, 2A plus N plus 1. Odd plus 1 means even. D is also even. Even plus even is even. Can I say that 2A plus N plus 1 is greater than N? Definitely, 2A plus 1 plus N, so it is greater, N into 2A plus N plus 1. See, this is a very interesting question sir, we can derive few conclusions also. 2A plus N plus 1 is 2 power 5 into 630. If 1 is odd, another is an even number. 1 is odd means if N is 1, this will become 6. 2 power 5 into 630, yes or no? But N is 1. What is the question from a book, certain consecutive pages are missing? So it cannot be. What is the next case of all? Catch is 630 is a prime number sir. If this is 630, this will become 2 power 5.
How can we be sure that 630 is prime?
How to check whether a number is a prime number or not? That is your doubt, which I will discuss afterwards. Good that you asked that out. 630 and 2 power 5, these both are eliminated. Because 2A plus N plus 1 should be greater than N, thirty-two is not greater than 630. Case 2. Case 2. If N is even, 2A plus N plus 1, even plus 1 is odd, 2A is even. What is even plus odd? N into 2A plus N plus 1, it is 2 power 5 into 630. N is even, 2A plus N plus 1 is odd. Even means 2, 2 power 4 into 630, not possible sir. Both are even. 2 square, 2 cube into 630, not possible sir. 2 cube, 2 square into 630, not possible sir. 2 power 4, 2 into 630, not possible sir. 2 power 5, 630, possible sir. So, N is thirty-two. 2A plus N plus 1 is 630. 2A plus thirty-three equal and two 630. 2A is 580. A is 290. So, A plus 1, A plus 2 till A plus N. Please write.
Sir, sir, sum of consecutive numbers will be divisible by N factor N? Am I correct?
Sum of N consecutive natural numbers is divisible by N factor?
Only N consecutive natural numbers or any number in between?
No, actually there is one theorem there. Suppose 1, 2, 3, 4. You are talking about 2, 3, 4, 5?
Yes sir.
2, 3, 4, 5.
Will it be divisible by 4 factor?
It will eventually come right, it is nothing but 5 into 4 factor.
Sir, so is that right? If we solve the question, so nine-eight-zero-eight must be divisible by some factor.
Ah, nine-eight-zero-eight into
Nine-eight-zero-eight is the sum of N consecutive numbers. So it must be divisible by N factor.
But N consecutive numbers, N, from where it is starting, we don't know right?
Sir, any N consecutive numbers. So, what I mean says, it must be divisible by 2, 3, 4, 5 till we get N?
Some, some might be No, here we are doing product right?
Product
It is sum.
Product will be divisible.
Product will be Sum to
Sum of 1, 2, 5 is not divisible by 5 into 1.
1, 2, 1 is divisible by 1.
Sum
Sum, sum 1, 3, 5.
15 by 1 will be divisible.
1, 5, 1.
I am thinking something else. See, I am thinking 1, 3, 5, 7. What is the difference to right? Hundred and five. What is the nearest? Sixteen plus 2 power 4. 1, 5, 9 plus 3 cube, 75 plus 27. One, five, nine, plus three, two, fifty-five, plus twenty-seven. Four cube, sixty-four, plus twenty-five. There is one theorem, I, I will do some groundwork today. If the series. See, what I am trying to think, I tell you. If the series is in A P. There is a common difference in the. A one into A two into A three. Whether it is even or odd, I need to find it out. Plus, difference is in the. How many terms are multiplied to the D cube or D power here? Now, I am confused whether it is the product of three terms or four terms. That's what I do a groundwork. Again, I repeat the point, what I am thinking. You take a series which is in A P. I am not sure whether the number of terms are even or odd. If it is even or odd, product of all this, plus a difference power, whatever it is, it is a perfect square. There is a theorem in progressions. You will do a groundwork. That's what I was thinking. Now, more than this question, what is the answer? Thirty-two and six thirty. Now, two lessons we will learn. One means, this is odd and it is even. And this is even and this is odd. Now, what we will do is, this question is nothing but writing nine-eight-zero-eight as a product of even into odd or odd into even. Am I right? Now, and another question which was this, how to check whether six thirty is prime or not? Please write down that. How to check whether a number is prime or composite? How to check whether a number is a prime or composite? How to check whether a number is a prime or composite? How to check whether a number is a prime or composite? See, suppose if I take twelve. What are the factors of twelve? One, two, three, four, six, twelve. I will put an arrow here. Square root of twelve is three point something. Can I say? All these numbers which are to the right side of the arrow are nothing but the multiples of the number to the left side of the arrow. Four is a multiple of two, six is a multiple of three and two, twelve is a multiple of two square into three. Suppose if a number is not divisible by two. How can it be divisible by four, six and two? Am I right? So, to check whether a number is a prime or composite. To check whether, one of the ways, to check whether a number is a prime or a composite. Take all the prime factors less than root N. Why only less than root N? Greater than root N, it is nothing but a multiple of the factors less than root N. Check whether all the numbers are divisible. If all of them. If none of them divides N. If none of them divides N. If none of them divides N, then N is a prime number. If none of them divides N, then N is a prime number. Now, to explain this, let me take an example. Six-sixty-seven. Square root of six-sixty-seven is closer to twenty-five point something. Take all the prime factors less than twenty-five. Two, three, five, seven, eleven, thirteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-three. Two does not divide, three does not divide, five does not divide, seven does not divide, eleven does not divide, none of them divides. No, ah, sorry, we will take twenty-three into twenty-nine. Twenty-three into twenty-nine is six-sixty-seven. Because twenty-three divides six-sixty-seven, six-sixty-seven is not. Correct, please write now. Why we are taking less than root N clear, right? Greater than root N is nothing but derivative from less than root N.
But here, C N is growing around here.
Where?
Sixty-five root is, you put that twenty-five.
Twenty-five point something.
So, all the factors greater than twenty-five should be multiple of.
No, no, it is the reverse. I took all the prime factors less than twenty-five. Right? If any of these number divides this number, that means the number is composite.
Ah, that's. But you said four, six, twelve are multiple of one, two, three.
That is to tell you that greater than root N, you don't need to take. If any number is not divisible, if a number is divisible by two, eventually four, six and twelve will be divisible. I am saying, less than root N, if none of them divides the number, then the number is a prime number. Please write. So similarly, you can also prove that six thirty, why it is prime?
Okay, divisibility rules for thirteen, seventeen.
You want thirteen, seventeen, ninety, write on a note. Divisibility rule for seventeen. It's clear, right? So in that way, you can do six thirty. Now, these are. Alright, this something generally which we discussed for M S C first year. Divisibility rule for seventeen comma nineteen, because seven, eleven, thirteen goes in the same way. Divisibility rule for seventeen. Comma nineteen. Divisibility rule for seventeen comma nineteen. Now, see here. Reminder one. Ten power eight divided by seventeen is minus one. Please write down the point. Reminder one, ten power eight divided by seventeen is minus one. Now, this based upon. Reminder one, ten power sixteen divided by seventeen is one. This is a Fermat's theorem. A power P minus one divided by P is always one. If it is one, ten power sixteen is one, ten power eight will be either minus one or plus one. Because ten power eight whole square is ten power sixteen. X square is one means X will be minus one or plus one. In this case, it happens to be minus one.
But can we generalize and say?
Ah?
Can we generalize that it will be either minus one or not?
Definitely, right? If I square it, ten power sixteen whole square is nothing but ten power eight divided by seventeen, whole square is one. This number. A, A square is one, what will be A value? Minus one or plus one?
Sir, then, ah, two power six by thirty-one, two minus one, right?
Two power?
Two power five by thirty-one.
Ah.
The minus is one.
One.
Now, take two power six by sixty-three.
Two power six by?
Sixty-three is one.
Hmm.
Then can we say two power three, but reminder of two power?
For, for what problem that we are solving? If it is sixty, I am doing it for eight.
Ah.
You tell the same analogy like that.
Yeah, so reminder of two power three by sixty-three.
Which one? Two power three by sixty-three. Hmm.
This should be one or minus one, but what it is?
We are doing when the denominator is a prime number. You are taking a composite number. I will tell you a few more examples. So that you will understand. Ten power six divided by seven, what it is? One.
One.
Ten cube divided by seven.
Minus.
Minus one. Three power four divided by five.
Ah.
One. Three square divided by five. Minus one. You take that examples, right? Now, in fact, we are discussing something which is not required. We will prove whether it is minus one or plus one. That's much more easy, right? Instead of we writing that it has to be minus one, we will check what is happen. Ten power eight divided by seventeen. Seventeen ones are seventeen, minus seven. Seven power eight divided by seventeen. Seven power eight is seven cube whole square into seven square divided by seventeen. Three forty-three, seventeen twos are three forty-three, three square is a nine. Forty-nine divided by seventeen, seventeen twos are thirty-four, fifteen. Fifteen nines are one thirty-five, seventeen eights are one thirty-six, minus. I am saying, because of Fermat's theorem, if it is one, this may become minus one or may become plus one. That's my point. Here it became minus one. Now, is it clear, right? Ten power eight divided by seventeen is minus one. Now, where it is used? This is a question. This little above cat level, sir. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, divided by seventy. Can I write it like this? Reminder of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, into ten power eight, plus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, divided by seventy. What is ten power eight by seventy? Minus one. What is minus one plus one? Zero. Any eight-digit number written even number of times is always divisible by seventy. Please write now. Any eight-digit number. Any eight-digit number. Any eight-digit number. Greater. Even number of times is always divisible by seventy. Alright, similarly, you can also take. Reminder one. Ten power nine divided by nineteen is minus one. You can prove it, sir. Similarly, take the negative reminder. In nineteen, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, divided by nineteen. Any nine-digit number written even number of times is always divisible by nineteen. Any nine-digit number written even number of times. Clear? Urvashi, you asked for seventeen and nineteen. You can develop the divisibility rule of any prime number by knowing about a concept by name, theory of osculation. You can do a little bit of research. O S C U L A T A O N, osculation. Theory of osculation. Osculation theory helps in finding the divisibility rule of any prime number. It's a very famous undecided problem, right? In mathematics, sir. Divisibility rule for seventeen and nineteen. What is the other doubt that we missed? One means six thirty prime, another means odd into even, even into odd. Okay, write down next one. Number of ways of writing a number. Number of ways of writing a number. As a product of. As a product of. Number of ways of writing a number as a product of. First one, odd into odd. As a product of, odd into odd, odd into even. Even into even. Even into even. It depends upon the question. We are discussing under unordered pair. We are discussing under unordered pair. Unordered pair means, A comma B is equal into B comma A. Reverse is not possible. Reverse is not possible. See here, I will take a question. Seventy-two. One into seventy-two, two into thirty-six, three into twenty-four, four into eighteen, six into twelve, eight into nine. First of all, seventy-two is an even number. Odd into odd can never give you even. This answer is zero. Next one, odd into even. Odd into even means how many cases? Three cases I thought. Can I say seventy-two is nothing but two power three into three square? This is three power zero. This is a three power one. This is a three square. That means, odd into even is nothing but number of odd factors. Are you all with me? Number of odd factors. Even into even is nothing but, because it is an unordered pair, total number of factors by two, minus of odd into odd. Plus, odd into even. Odd into even. You remember, sir, in one of the workshops, we discussed a question. In how many ways can a number can be written as sum of two or more consecutive natural numbers? You wrote it down in your notes that it is number of odd factors minus one. If you see fifteen, fifteen is written as, one plus two plus three plus four plus four. Four plus five plus six, seven plus eight. Fifteen is three into five. You wrote one concept here, it is nothing but the number of odd factors minus one. Now, see here, please go back to that question, nine-eight-zero-eight. What is that question? Sum of N consecutive natural numbers. N consecutive, here it is N greater than or equal into one. When you are writing sum of N consecutive numbers as nine-eight-zero-eight, you are writing it as actually odd into even. Am I right? Odd into even. What is odd into even? Number of odd factors. But in that number of odd factors, there is a case, one into seventy-two. That means, N value is becoming one, two A N plus N plus one is becoming seventy-two. That is the reason. In how many ways can you write a number as a sum of two or more consecutive natural numbers? It is a number of odd factors minus one. Are you all with me? Sum of two, one, sum of N consecutive natural numbers is nothing but writing it as odd into even. Odd into even is nothing but number of odd factors. But writing the number itself will be one way. But the question is two or one, so you will subtract minus. Are you all with me? Please write down that point. Sanju, clear? Number of odd into odd, odd into even. Even into even. See, these right-hand side values will change depending upon the num- numerical values that you are taking. Because it is seventy-two and seventy-two is an even number. Because here we got zero, because odd into odd will never give you even number. Odd into even, even into even. If it is an odd number, odd number, the value will change depending upon the question. You write down the base, you will get it. Please write down another important learning. Number of ways of writing a number. As a sum of two or more consecutive natural numbers. Two or more consecutive natural numbers. Is given by number of odd factors minus one. Number of odd factors minus one. Please write down the proof also. Can I clear right proof? Number of odd factors minus one. Number of odd factors minus one. Please write down the question. In how many ways, two forty can be written as? I think last week only we discussed this number of odd factors. In how many ways, two forty can be written as? Sum of two or more. In how many ways, two forty can be written as? Sum of two or more consecutive natural numbers. Sum of two or more. Consecutive natural numbers. So, this will be, two forty, it is nothing but twenty-four into ten. Two cube into three, into two into five, two power four into three into five. Number of odd factors is two into two minus one. Here, there is a sheet that is given to you. Please try to solve the sheet. Tomorrow, I will take the session as a monologue session. So that you. so that you can take time you can save the unproductive time in the class also please go through today's session go through today's session I think today we started with problems based on digits right then we discussed average one number added twice added
twenty five what is the answer
twenty five sixteen plus thirty twenty one plus twenty
now Vichy which page was missing
okay I think uh sir five minutes right there is one question which I did not solve from a book one single page is missing because of the missing page because of the missing page the average of the page numbers was founded to be one plus n by two is closer to twenty five two by three n will be closer to fifty because of the missing page because of the missing page because of the missing page average was founded to be S N by N which is twenty five two by three seventy seven by three three should be closer to fifty two values forty eight and fifteen two cases if I take seventy seven by three into sixteen into sixteen it is one two three two by forty eight forty eight page numbers are there after missing one page one page will have page numbers on both the sites that means if forty eight page numbers are there after missing one page total page numbers will be there from one to fifty average will be S N by N N into N plus one by two by fifty twenty five one two seven five by fifty one page is missing which means two page numbers are missing one two three two seventy five is forty three forty three is twenty one plus twenty twenty one plus twenty two why other case is not possible average equal into seventy seven by three into seventeen into seventeen it is one three zero nine by one fifty one are the page numbers after missing one page it is one to fifty three average is nothing but S N by N N into N plus one by two by fifty three one four three one by fifty three this is not possible because if one page is missing this side or this side even what is odd plus even odd even plus odd odd that means if one page is missing the sum of the page numbers missing should be odd but this is odd this is odd what is odd minus odd even even is not possible even is not possible where you did mistake
last step calculation I wrote thirty three instead of
oh forty three you wrote thirty just go through today's class any doubts Shiv Shiv any doubts
she for the question
huh
item twenty five two by thirteen
Kacha you present to three hours yesterday how many hours Pakka yesterday you should come any doubts Shiv go through it sir any doubts ask me please try to solve so that we can save a lot of time Shiv please